We've got everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is July 27, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please have a moment of silence for our first responders and our active military personnel for everything that they do, and wish them the safest daily. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor. Before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Welsh has asked to be excused, and I will mark him so. Mayor Gunter?
Here.
Councilmembers Cosdine?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Tate?
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Thank you. Changes to the agenda. Before we get to that, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Just to advise, the City Manager is currently involved in some mediation regarding waste pro is taken all day, and he's still not complete. There's not complete yet, but he intends on joining the council meeting as soon as that is concluded.
Okay, thank you. The only change I have to the agenda presently is Item 10A1, which is Ordinance 59-22, and 10A2, Ordinance 60-22. The City Clerk has advised me that she inadvertently left off the quasi-judicial testimony language for these items, and at this time, each public hearing will be swearing in for those who wish to participate and provide testimony. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Don't move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosdine?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 6 is recognitions and achievements. 6A is presentation on city employees for years of service. At this time, I'd like to recognize two employees for their outstanding service and dedication to our city. These two employees have recently retired, and I want to thank them for being such a valuable member to our team here with staff. Madam City Clerk, would you please read the name of the recipients and who were unable to attend tonight's presentation, but we wanted to make sure that they were recognized?
Yes, Your Honor. Kimberly Rotondo and Hope Albury.
Do we know the amount of years of service for those two particular individuals?
I apologize. I don't have it in my notes, but I can get that for you after the meeting.
Okay, that's fine. I just want to thank them for all their years of service and their dedication to our community. Moving on to Item 7, approval minutes. We don't have any listed. Item 8 is citizens' input time. A maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. Anyone who wishes to participate with citizens' input will use the podium to the left in front of the double doors. Come on up, sir.
Paul Beatty. Mayor Gunter and council members. As President of the Lee Building Industry Association, a resident and a company owner here in Cape Coral, I came tonight to express our industry's displeasure with the new permitting system, EnerGov. Since its launch, our industry has incurred nothing but problems and delays in receiving permits. It seems that the urgency we heard at our May 6 meeting with yourself, the City Manager, and other staff fell on deaf ears and was full of empty promises. Three months later, here we are, still no further along. These delays are costing us thousands of dollars and the city valuable staff and resources. Our company alone currently has 135 permits in the system. The average number of business days it's taking for the first review is 53. Then you add on the fees, the pickup, the CO delays. We're talking about months to get permits and paperwork through the city system. This is unacceptable. Last week, I listened to the presentation by the City Manager at your council meeting, but again, nothing new is reported to believe a fix is imminent or possible. Now, next week, staff is going to Des Moines, Iowa to find solutions, a city that has issued just over 200 single-family permits the last 12 months compared to our almost 5,000. Per the City Manager last week, Des Moines experienced the same issues we have and has successfully resolved them by moving to the latest version of EnerGov. So, as a city, are we going to take advice from a municipality doing 5% of our workload? It makes no sense to me as a business owner or a resident. How much is this trip going to cost our industry? There's no need for it when the City of Fort Myers and Bonita Springs, right down the road, both use this system. City of Fort Myers issued more permits than Des Moines, Iowa in the last 12 months. The City Manager has failed to move quickly to hire staff. He mentioned last week he was fully staffed, even after you shared the numbers from Lee County. I'd like to thank you for quickly approving those hires. This city is not creating an environment to keep staff and provide additional overtime for salaried employees. The fact that no backup plan was in place before the system went live is inexcusable. I personally stood up at a meeting in January and questioned Mr. Cetero, "Do we have a backup plan if the system fails?" I was quickly silenced and told, "Don't worry about it. We have it under control." And here I am in front of you seven months later, begging for a solution to this crisis. From talking to staff personally, the system went live knowing it was not ready. Was the old system, E-Trackit, that bad? Last summer, we were averaging seven to 12 days turnaround, but now we're over 50. E-Trackit was a system, per the City Manager's quote, crashed about 18 times over 22 weeks. EnerGov is crashing at least once a day.
Wrap it up, sir.
We immediately asked the city, "Issue refunds for permits that are not issued within 30 days as required by state law. Discontinue the use of EnerGov. Switch back to our old system and contact Lee County and engage with them and their software provider, Exela, to bring online for the future."
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. I'll open up for discussion for citizens' input. Councilmember Tate?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beatty. I know that we have heard those same concerns from the industry. Ms. Baron, can you look into, I know several of the builders have asked me about the credits that we would issue if the permits are running late by state law. Can you look into that? And please let us know what that is. And tonight, we are going to approve the additional positions, and I don't believe that, I'm not sure about Fort Myers being on EnerGov, are they? Are they? So, I didn't know if they were or they weren't. I know that a lot of, I know Sanibel is, so. But please note that this council spent enormous time last week talking about this and trying to move the needle forward. And I think that, from what I've heard from staff, from city management and stuff, that we are making more progress. As to the Des Moines, I'm going to let staff answer that because it's nothing that I have information for. Thank you.
Yeah, also, Mr. Beatty, thank you for coming forward, and I think your frustrations are heard loud and clear. I think most of us here in the council have those same exact frustrations, and I'm sure many of the staff has those frustrations as well. Know that we are working hard and diligently, not only to find a long-term solution to the problem, but as we discussed in our meeting last week, we want to find out what type of short-term solutions that we may be able to implement until we can get to those long-term solutions. One of those discussions will be tonight, here in a few minutes, a little longer in our presentation, or a little further in our presentation. And, you know, I'm sure we'll be getting an update during that discussion from staff, exactly where we are and what direction that we're heading in the short term. So, I would invite you to stick around to hear those comments from staff and any further comments that this council has. But we recognize it is a, and I'll characterize how I put it last week, a crisis that we need to address. We have to find solutions sooner rather than later. We have to identify those short-term solutions until we can find the long-term solutions. And I will tell you that I think this council and staff, moving forward since last week, have put these concerns at a high priority, and we recognize that it is a financial impact, not only to the residents but to the businesses here in our city, and we have to find a solution in the very near future. So, I just wanted to mention that to you. Any other comments regarding citizens' input? Okay. Go ahead.
I would like to ask the management if you could respond, not right now, but later, about the Des Moines experience. I mean, if Fort Myers is having it, why are we going to Des Moines when we could just go across the river and see? So, I don't really know. I know that Bill Johnson from the construction industry is going as well, so you all are spending money to do it, and if we can learn across the river without spending the money, I don't know what it's going to cost, then I would appreciate that information as well.
Yes, I'll ask Matt Granbo to come up if he's here. I know he is.
Matthew Granbo, Special Products Coordinator in the City Manager's Office. Regarding the Des Moines trip, the reason that that particular municipality was selected was based on how they structured their system itself. Des Moines is on premises in terms of their data hosting. So, because of many, because many of the issues that we face are the technical issues with the system, the slowdowns, the spinning, we wanted to find a municipality that had as similar as possible to our system. And the City of Des Moines was strongly recommended by our consulting organization that we've contracted with, Plant Moran, that is doing our assessment and optimization plan. They had existing relationships with staff and development services and IT up in Des Moines, and it was their top recommendation of all the municipalities in the United States for us to learn from. Des Moines also implemented EnerGov eight months prior to the City of Cape Coral. They implemented it last summer. I think it was in June or July. And so, the benefit of visiting Des Moines in terms of the timeline is that they upgraded from 2020 to 2021 on the same version of the system, utilizing the same data storage strategy that the City of Cape Coral is utilizing. So, despite the differences in the actual volume of permits, if you're looking purely at the technical issues that we've been facing, there's no better option for a site visit than that city.
Okay, if no further discussion, we'll move on to Item 9, Business. 9A is the consent agenda. I'll open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items for discussion, or if we do not have any items to pull, looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as distributed.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosdine?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 9B is appointments to boards. We do not have any listed in the agenda here this evening, so we'll move on to Item 9C, unfinished business. C1 is follow-up items for council. We do not have any listed. Does council have any follow-up items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Item 9D, new business. D1 is the addendum. I have asked the City Clerk to add to our agenda tonight involving academic village discussion. As we all know, staff was involved in a process last week involving academic village development, and at one point, our City Manager had sent out an email that he was going to suspend that discussion. So, my concern was what was our next steps forward? So, I think that's the main reason I put this on for a discussion. So, I turned it over to our Assistant City Attorney that may be able to shed some light on that, but before I do, Councilmember Cosdine, you have a question or a comment?
I was going to suggest that we wait until a time that we have the City Manager here. I think because it was his decision, it would be better to hear from him.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
As long as we...
Yeah, if it's okay with you, I would suggest moving on to the next item.
Yeah, that's fine. If you like, if the rest of council agrees, we'll just kind of hold this discussion aside until the City Manager is present.
Right, as a member of the Evaluations Selection Advisory Committee, it would be better if I not.
Right. Right, okay. All right, we'll move on to Item 9D is Personnel Actions. E1 is Resolution 15222, approval additional staffing and development services, and I think this is a result of the EnerGov issue that was mentioned earlier in citizens' input. So, I'll turn it over to Madam Assistant City Manager.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. One of the issues that the Speaker brought up during citizens' input was staffing. I will tell you that the City Manager will give deference to departments, and if they need staffing, we will do our best to accommodate that. In the past couple of weeks, we've been talking with DSD, Vince, and IT, and Vince did approach us and provide us with a suggested level of staffing that he would like to add to his current level. I'm going to ask Vince to come up and talk about the positions that we are adding. Overall, I think there would be a total, once we do all the phasing, of about maybe 40 employees, but right now, at its first phase, we're looking to add, I believe, 26. So, I'm going to ask Vince to come up and address the staffing that he has requested and what the reasons were behind that and how he intends to utilize that staff.
Vince Cetero, Development Services Director. As Connie mentioned, the resolution contains the request for various positions. Some of these are new. One of them is an Assistant Building Official, which is something that we've talked about in the past in budget requests, and Mr. Hernandez and I had talked about it as well not too long ago, and we decided that it would be very appropriate at this point to do it. People with the certificate or license to be building officials in the state of Florida are hard to find these days because there's so much competition, and having someone in charge is one thing, but having a backup is quite another. And if you don't, you look to the private sector or you look for people who worked for us before that are retired, and we've done that, and we've been lucky. But we believe that time is not on our side with that because we've got some people that we've called and they have been out of the business for some time, even though they have an active license. So, we feel the time is appropriate now to look for an Assistant Building Official who would have to come in with the same exact criteria that our building official has right now, Steve Popowski. The official title for the record is called Building Code Administrator. It's issued by the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation. There's also a professional certification through a private organization, but that's the ticket that they would have to have. The other is an old title that we're asking to reboot, and that is called Plan Review Technician. This is a criteria, excuse me, this is a position that contains criteria where we would allow people to work on building permit applications for a variety of uses, commercial, industrial, non-residential, as well as single-family, but they would be doing the review that are required, that we need to do in accordance with the Land Development Code and other ordinances outside of the building code, so they do not have to have the building plans, examiner certification, which is also required by DPBR, as inspectors are. In the past, a lot of people talk about back in the day when department numbers were really high, '03 to '06 and there, with emphasis on '04 and '05. There were people that had that title in the city. What we're asking is to reinstate that title. The Human Resources Department has reviewed the job description. They've reviewed the criteria and the requirements. They've approved it. It would not become official until you approve the actual establishment of a vacancy. We're asking for four of those. Now, all of the positions that we're asking for are funded by the building fund, and in your package, there should be an economic analysis of what those positions would cost right now through the end of the year and then recurring. The Plan Review Technician positions that I just mentioned are ones that we believe can be funded by building because they're very closely aligned with the building permit process. The material and information that they're going to be reviewing is required by our codes, and you need to meet those criteria in order to get a building permit. It's the same concept or line of thinking with what we use for what we call ordinance inspectors. We have three of those. They review permits in the field and conduct inspections for items that are not regulated by the building code, for example, seawalls. It's a construction issue, but it is regulated by our engineering design standards. Fences, wells, and other things as well, among a plethora of things that they would inspect. So, these positions would fall. The bulk of the requirement or request, excuse me, is customer service representatives. We're also asking for an additional supervisor because the span of control would grow. We have, I believe, 22 customer service representatives now, if my math is correct, including two seniors. This would raise that number by 50%. And we are acutely aware of what's happening, and you discussed that earlier in the meeting. We're also asking for three plans examiners and three building inspectors. The total, I believe, is 26, as stated in the resolution. Job requirements and job descriptions are attached as well in the backup packet, and again, the new positions that don't exist in our, officially in our system until you authorize the execution of that are the Plans Review Technicians and the Assistant Building Official. So, that is our request this evening.
Just a real quick question, Mr. Cetero, just for clarification. If you read the resolution, that's been a part of the backup information on today's agenda, and you look at the breakdown of the 26 positions, it states that we have 10 customer service representatives, one customer service supervisor, six plans examiners, six building inspectors, two plan review technician, and one assistant building official. In your comments, I think you had mentioned three building inspectors and four plans review technicians, so...
Oh, I was off. I apologize. The resolution is correct.
The resolution is...
Yeah, I apologize, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I think Vince may have forgotten when we were talking about these positions last week. We decided to move forward on three of the building...
Yeah, yeah.
Building official, building inspectors, and the plans examiners. He had requested those in second phase, but we wanted to go ahead and front those and get them moving along.
Okay.
That's where that came from.
All right, great. So, what's presented in the resolution is the correct information.
That's correct, yes.
And secondly, you know, we all know that this is going to take a period of time to get these positions advertised, filled. Two of the positions are new, so that at some point, I guess those positions will have to come back. Will those positions have to come back, or will tonight's resolution basically establish those two positions?
Yes, tonight, the resolution will establish those positions, and Mayor and Council, in anticipation that you would approve some of these positions, we posted them last Friday to already begin the recruitment in anticipation of your approval for that. So, we wanted to try to get that moving along just at least a few days sooner.
So, again, you know, we know there's going to be a process to get these individuals through the process, get them filled, get them trained, and get them where they're, you know, productive on a daily basis. So, we know there's going to be a little bit of time. My question for staff, Madam Assistant City Manager, is what are we going to be doing in the short term? I know we have talked about providing some staff over and above their normal 40-hour work week, whether it be in the evenings. We've talked about providing possibly staff on Saturdays. Where are we with that? I know there were some questions regarding salary employees, if they could work additional time. Where are we at with all of that as far as our short-term goal?
Following the council meeting last week, on Thursday and Friday, we began efforts to expand on the number of city employees who have been helping out with the EnerGov system. We put out pretty much an all-hands-on-deck call to the department heads. In response, we had about 160 employees who initially responded. Of course, you know, overtime can be a great motivator, so we did get quite a few on that. Of course, you know, overtime can be a great motivator, so we did get quite a few on that. We also then tasked Vince and his crew to come up with some training plans and procedures. They've conducted several this week. They did one really quick one on Friday, last Friday. So they're bringing people onboard, and I've heard very good comments about the training sessions that have been going on this week. I know members of my staff attended the training, and they are in the process of getting ready to start helping out. So we're hoping that in just this gap here, that we can plug in some city employees who will be able to learn some of the tasks. And I'm looking, I'm looking back at Vince because I know that some of these tasks and the processes are a little bit complicated because I've been in the system myself. And hopefully, I didn't approve something that I shouldn't have. But they can be very, they can be a little complicated. But I think Vince and his staff is doing a great job, along with IT, Michelle and her staff, getting this going. We have some licensing issues that we have to resolve for those who are going to be in the system, and I think Vince is working on that. But I think probably by, I think this weekend will be our first real good test run. I think they're setting up, are you setting up schedules for people to sign up for, correct?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to compliment what you said. It's an ongoing process, and we have training sessions today, and we're scheduling them all week. We were able to pull together a training session pretty quickly on Friday afternoon. Connie called a meeting at one o'clock, and we met, and my staff put together an agenda. And by two forty-five, we were in the green room, and we had over one hundred and fifty people, most on teams, one hundred and forty-three, and about eighteen to twenty in person. So we were very proud of that, we were able to do it. Of course, a lot of people had plans for the weekend, and some of them were able to work overtime for us. So what we're doing is inviting people to come back this week, or newer people that have signed up that could make it. And then we're working with them based on their individual needs, how they can fit it into their work schedule or after working hours, and, you know, what their skill set is and so forth. Because we want to be able to put people in situations where they're comfortable in doing this because some of the permit applications are not very complex and others are.
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge we have also is Plans Reviewers. We only have so many. And also, my understanding, you have to have a state certificate or certification to be a Plans Reviewer, so we only have so many of those.
Yeah, Plan Review wasn't an issue here. This was all a process at the front end. Now, it all flows together, and we've talked about this at great length at staff meetings. The more we put into the system, then the more we're pushing into the Plan Reviewers, so we have to assure that they're able to work overtime and so forth. We have had some new ones come on from the batch that you approved back in March. And it took that long to get people onboard and hired and trained, I said that backwards, hired, onboarding, and trained. And that, we've seen positive results there. And now, if you approve this, we would have even more. But we have a pool of people we've talked to, so that's going to hopefully shorten the period up. But I went astray a little bit on your question, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. We concentrated mostly on this, or actually one hundred percent, at the front end of the process to try to move things through the system.
And I know you asked about the salary. I met with the city attorney last week as well to discuss what our options are with regard to salaried employees. They are limited because when you come to work for the city and you get promoted up into a position where you are salaried, there are certain benefits that you no longer take with you as you do as an hourly or as a union employee. So what we have been able to do, at least for those salaried employees who want to work off-hours on the weekends, and we wanted to do four-hour shifts, we have offered up a hundred dollars special comp for those employees that will do that. So that's, you know, we had very long discussions with our inside and outside attorneys on what would be something that we could do. Because we know that salaried employees, they want to help, and we have some that are helping during their regular work schedules, when they have some extra time. But that was one of the things that, after discussion with the city attorney, that myself, HR, came up with as an option.
Yeah, because I think it would be beneficial if we had the employees that are already trained, if they have a willingness to work the overtime, to try to let them do it because they're already trained and their experience and the task on a daily basis. So if they want to come in on eight hours on a Saturday or whatever to help to mitigate the backlog, then I think we should try to do that.
And then like CBA agreements where they clearly spell out that you get paid time and half of your base rate, or whatever the rate is that you earn, hourly rate. You can't do that with the salaried employees, so.
Right. Hourly employees, a little more easier.
A little, yes.
To get through the process here.
Yes, that's correct.
In the short term. All right, well, that's good to hear. I guess, just one last question, Mr. Cetero. Is there anything else that you think that would help? You know, I know you've had many discussions with staff. Is there anything else that we should be thinking about in the short term that would help? You know, I think the employees are doing a great job. I know that they're doing the best that they can do with the tools that they have presently. So is there any other tools that we may be able to give them?
Not that I would need approval for at this point. I'll speak of some of those because I'm sure you're going to want to hear those. We're looking and continuing to look at employees that are retired that come back. Most of those are Plans Reviewers and Inspectors, and we need them too. There's also some other things that I'm working on with my staff right now, and that involves perhaps an assist or a lend program from other municipalities or counties. That might be helpful too, because people might have more expertise in a particular area, or if they're current employees, they would know, they could adapt pretty quickly to our system. It really doesn't matter what system they're using. I forget the system Lee County's using. I know Fort Myers is using Intergov, but they can learn quickly. So that's a concept that we're looking at right now. But, you know, we have to be respectful of their work too, of course, and what their parameters are. Others might be from the private sector, people that, there's some firms out there that have hired, have been hired by municipalities either to augment and supplement their staff or that actually run their building division or department in real small municipalities. Estero is a hybrid. Most of their building division is run by a private firm, and I believe they have some full-time or part-time employees. But we're not looking at that model. We're looking at help that they might be able to give us because they might have experience with a particular permit system. And I did call one firm last week to talk to them and see if they might be able to work with us on a short-term contract to have some of their people come over that have worked on Intergov and other communities. And they do. So I'm waiting for a callback from one of their vice presidents to see if we might be able to grab some people there. And then maybe Plan Reviewers and Inspectors as well. There's one firm we did have a contract with several years ago, especially for the council members who were on the council when Mr. Zerlag gave us the direction to put a proposal together for the council's approval, was to have some firms on-call, not for customer service end, but at the back end, at Plan Review and Inspections. And we were able to, we had contracts with three firms, but we were only able to use one because the other two are local and they always had conflicts. But if, we were able to use one firm, but very, very rarely. This would be different. We'd be going at the front end mostly, and then maybe if they have other staff to assist us. They're very helpful too for building official services, but that's, what I just mentioned tonight are ideas that we're working on and that I'm going to try to have answers to very quickly. But I'm not requesting any approval at this time.
Okay. And one last comment, and then I'll turn it over to other members of council. I know we had a discussion early on about possibly closing the permit center, maybe on Fridays or one day a week, whatever that day may be, to give staff the opportunity to focus specifically on the review of the applications that had already been submitted. We also spoke about not shutting down the online, keeping that open pretty much twenty-four seven like we have now. Is that a viable option? Have we discussed that? What's your opinion on that?
We're proceeding with that plan, and the plan would be to close on Fridays, starting in the first week in August. But I need to speak to Mr. Hernandez more about that, depending on how things go this evening and how things have gone last week and even in the coming week. But the plan would be to do that, to allow staff more time to be able to concentrate on the permit applications that are already in. One of the issues that we have to decide on that, and I have some recommendations for him to consider, is how long the portal or the CSS, Customer Self-Service. We call it, I call it the portal for short. That's where you apply directly online from your computer. You don't come into the office. How long that would be shut down? Because if we have it just shut for eight hours, we may not see any results that are significant. We have to decide that. There's different alternatives there, and there are different results you would get on that. So that is definitely a viable option, and we are, we're planning to do it. Billy Johnson has been notified of that with his agency, but he's waiting for our official announcement before he tells his membership, or at least I think that's what he's going to do. Because, you know, that's a very big, a very big deal, and we have to let the community know that. The answer is yes, Mayor, to your question, it was a long answer, sorry.
Okay, thank you, sir. And any other thing that I'd like to ask is maybe, Madam Assistant City Manager, for the next several weeks, until we get a good understanding and a grasp of the short-term solutions that we have developed, if we could have this agenda topic on each and every regular council meeting, so we can get an update on a weekly basis of what we're doing.
That would be fine, sir, yes.
And that's all I have. Councilmember Hayden.
Ms. City Manager, you mentioned at the beginning that overtime was a great motivator. I'm hearing about four-hour blocks of time, and I'm hearing about people, employees not necessarily wanting to give up their weekends to do that. I'm also hearing that if an employee has the availability during his regular workday, if his load of work isn't sufficient enough to necessarily carry him through the day, that he could work on this during his regular work hours and not necessarily have to do it on overtime. The union head said he has no, and I'll quote him, has no problem with that. So if we have of these a hundred and some employees, that if some of those employees have the ability during their regular workday to handle some of the beginning stages of these permits, which is, I guess, what most of them would be doing anyway, you know, why do we have to wait for the weekend? Or why do we have to wait till after hours for some of them to do that?
Councilmember, it's not quite that simple. Most of the people that can do this during their workday are the administrative staff. A lot of the employees in the union that have volunteered to provide some assistance in this work out in the field.
Okay.
And they provide us with their availability. They provided that information to IT and also to DSD. So we're, and most of that availability is on the weekends and then the days that they don't work, such as some of our on four-day, ten-hour days. So what we want, what we need to do and have to do, at least at the beginning here, is we need to be able to, first of all, track the hours that these employees work. It is going to be charged back to the building fund. What is important, at least for IT and DSD, at least what the directors had expressed to us when we talked about this, is that for them, they would probably see more value in someone working a four-hour shift than someone working a two-hour shift, just because it takes so much time to get, you know, to get up to speed and everything. So at the beginning, we want people to focus on the four-hour shifts.
Four-hour, okay.
So that you're not going in, sitting down, getting, logging in, waiting a little bit, and sometimes with the speed issues, you could have somebody who the two hours is up before you even process five or six permits, right? So we want to do the four-hour shifts right now on the off-hours, the off-work hours. During the day, when people are working their regular scheduled daily routine, if they have free time, and one example is our executive assistant to Rob, Cheryl. She might have a couple of hours where she has time free when Rob's not around.
Sure.
And she can log in, and she can process these permits. She needs to track her time so that we can charge it back to the building fund. If we find that the four-hour request or requirement at this point is not productive and we're not getting the type of return for the investment, then we might have, we might go down to maybe a two-hour increment or something like that.
I just want to make sure we keep our options open and no one's slotted so specifically to working the weekends or working overtime, that if there is the availability of employees, that it somehow fits into their regular work assignments, that that can be done. I just don't want to shut off that possibility because of, you know, seventeen hundred permits in the queue and what we're facing now, because the longer we wait on starting any of these permits, the further we get behind on anything. So, you know, I just hope we're looking at all our options to keep this moving forward rather than just certain blocks of time.
We are, and none of our directors have, or all of our directors know that, as it's put as that way. And they have been flexible as far as allowing their employees to work on the permitting, if that's what the employees want to do.
Sure, okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Tate.
Thank you. As part of this hiring plan, can you update us, along with the Intergov, that Matt sends us a report as to how many people you've hired, what positions, so we know what's going on in the service level? And I think that would help us. And that way, we also have something else to say on our emails when we're getting complaints from some of the builders, at least we can update that information. And did you, August first is like three days away, so if we're going to make this plan that you said we're going to do, August first, it's like we need to be making that plan tomorrow because it's right around the corner. And so I have concerns about the fact that, you know, August first is here, and we're really still not sure what we're doing. But did you mention that the portal itself, the customer service portal, would be down one day a week?
No, I was trying to explain what we would decide on how and if the portal would be shut in conjunction with the counter being closed.
But if the counters close, wouldn't the portal be staying?
Yes.
So they wouldn't be able to do everything online, even though they can't come in, right?
Right. It would be, it would be, thank you for bringing that up, that I did not say that. That's a very important point. It would, the portal would be shut at least at the same time as the counter. The question is, what do we do after hours on the weekend? That's the issue that I'm working through right now, and I need to speak with Mr. Hernandez more about that. Because we gave that a lot of thought when we had the shutdown in March or April.
Right.
On the front end and the back end, because the counter was shut for a week, as you remember.
Right.
But we also shut the portal down for some time on the Saturday, Sunday before, or the Saturday, Sunday after. So it was more than forty hours. That's what we're dealing with right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, for me, I think leaving the portal open would be probably the way to go. That would be my recommendation. Keep that, you know, the last thing we want to do is impede the permits coming in and shutting down that twenty-four-seven operation. I can understand shutting down the office on Fridays so those employees can solely focus at the task at hand, but that's just my recommendation.
Yeah, that's why I brought it up, so.
Well, but keep in mind.
But that's a discussion you'll.
That's a discussion I have to have, because keep in mind, if we do that, we're only, we're only getting a half a win. Because it would be the people coming in, the people would still be applying for permits, and we'd be falling that much more behind. That's the rationale.
Yeah, except you can't close, you can't shut down the portal.
Well, we did before.
Yeah, but that was then, and we're having, just imagine how much more complaints we're going to get when people say, oh, I can't even get into the system. gonna get when people say, oh, I can't even get into the system. I got this builder right behind you shaking his head, I got him shaking his head. I'm saying, that's not gonna work. So when you're talking to the city manager, please let him know that keeping the portal closed and keeping the counter closed is not gonna work. I don't think, but I'm not the IT and the genius behind EnerGov, but I just, I'm watching the users, and you're a user, you know that's just not gonna work. Does that mean that me, as a customer, I wouldn't be able to get in and check my permits?
No, we wouldn't, I wouldn't want that to happen, but I have to talk to IT about that. We'll work it out.
Okay. I just don't want that to happen.
Okay. Understood.
Okay. Sounds like we'll get an update on that at our next.
Yes, and I didn't want to forget to mention that Matt and our office, I believe, conducted a training session today, and if he wanted to give a real quick update on how that went. Matt?
What about the, the construction industry? Are they getting trained as well? Does anybody go into that?
Yeah, so this morning, we had our very first EnerGov training workshop. It's the first of five that are currently scheduled, and they're plan, we're planning to continue them into the fall and early winter. The first session today was an EnerGov 101 introductory session, and it's open to anyone in the community, but future sessions, especially the next four, will be much more focused on the construction industry. We're gonna be having sessions on inspections, single-family residential permits, common permit types, as well as licensing. And the sessions are established, so there's about a 30-minute presentation, then it's opened up into a workshop, where staff can work one-on-one with individuals who bring their laptops or have access to a computer. So the first session was today. We had over 50 people sign up, and many people participate today. We're also gathering feedback during and prior to these sessions to determine the topics that will be happening in September and October.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, any other discussions? All right, we do have Resolution 155-22. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Nine F is petitions to counsel. We do not have any listed. Nine G1 is a follow-up items for city manager or city management. Would a quality update?
Yes, Public Works Director Mike Ilchism and if Maya is here as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Maya Robert, Public Works. Lake Okah Chobe is still pretty stable. No complaint there, only basin ran off downstream of the lake so far. No lake releases for a few months now. We received the draft of the Lake Okah Chobe System Operating Manual last night, and it will go through a review process by the federal and state agencies, and so this process is gonna take a few months, and we'll keep you updated as to any comments or concerns we have with the final document. We have, which was not in the memo, we have a green algae bloom, which is similar to the one we had last year in the tidal system between Del Prado and Country Club. So it's a green algae, it is not blue-green algae, it is not producing toxins. We started seeing patches last week. Staff did a survey on Monday. The contractor went in the field yesterday, and we are in the process of setting up the contractor to work. His availability will be either the second or third week of August, and we will be harvesting. We're looking at access points. With the building boom, a lot of the sites we used to offload the algae last year are not available, so we will have some challenges there. On the bubble curtains, we received both permits, you know this already. The mandolin canal was cleaned up by the dive team last week and inspected, and we will have the Moody Canal bubble curtain installed within the next two weeks. We're working on setting up a schedule for installation with the vendor, and we will come up with the agreement with FWC within the next few weeks. If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Tate.
I've been reading in the paper a lot about some of the bacteria at the different beaches. Are we all good?
I do not have this information. I can find out for you. So the Yakla Beach is the only beach in Cape Coral that we have tested, and it's tested by the Florida Department of Health for enterococci.
And it's good?
I do not know. I will have to look at, at the condition.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the update. Okay, we will move on to the next item. Item 10 is Ordinance and Resolutions. Today, public hearing, we have Ordinance 59-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 59-22, An Ordinance Amending the City of Cape Coral Official Zoning District Map of All Property Within the Limits of the City of Cape Coral. By rezoning property described as Unit 24, Block 1039, Lots 9 through 11, Cape Coral Subdivision. From professional to residential multifamily low zone. Property is located at 1219 Academy Boulevard, providing severability and an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is not what I voted up. Good evening, for the record, Wyatt Daltrey, Planning Team Coordinator of the City's Planning Division. My credentials may be obtained in the City Clerk's office. I've noticed there is currently a minor technical glitch. If I could request that this be pushed, this ordinance be pushed a couple cases over so that I could get the proper PowerPoint presentation ready for you, for my presentation. I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, we can put this on the, on the, on the back end if, if you want to.
If I may offer, I do have it in paper version, if you want to show it on the MO.
If that would please counsel, I could do it in paper version also and maintain the agenda as it stands now.
We have it in our backup material.
Okay. All right, thank you. I apologize for the inconvenience. Thank you again for your consideration here. We'll end up doing this a little bit, go back a little bit to 2005 and do it this way. What we have before you today is Ordinance 59-22, which is a rezone from the professional zoning district to the residential multifamily low zoning designation. This property is located in southeastern Cape Coral at 1219 Academy Boulevard. This is actually not too far from City Hall, about a quarter-mile south of our current The property, as you can see, is on the east side of Academy Boulevard, with a mixed-use future land use classification. This is aerial, as you can see, has a lot of developed duplexes nearby. This request is to, again, rezone to the multifamily low RML. And I'll discuss in this presentation why that is appropriate with this future land use classification. The current and proposed zoning, you can see, as you can see here, the map on the left shows a current zoning designation of professional office in light blue. The proposal to brown the RML zoning designation. The history, this history was amended to mixed use back in 2003 and rezoned to professional in 2008. It was part of the city centrum concept. That concept, which was supported by council back in that time, had the underlying idea of promoting professional and commercial uses that are appropriate near the government core that is located here, between City Hall and the various other city buildings, the county center, government center, located two blocks, the southeast of City Hall, and the United States Post Office. The idea was completely, an employment center in Cape Coral, similar to what you see in most downtown areas, and to do that, the idea was to provide more future land use to, that could accommodate such uses. As part of the analysis of this rezone, we looked at multifamily residential siting guidelines, and of those guidelines, which is Policy 1.7, our future land use element, we found that this rezone met three of those four guidelines, which makes it a good candidate for multifamily residential development. We also analyzed this through the goal of our housing element, which promotes varied residential stock within Cape Coral, and of course, the provision of additional multifamily uses would support that. In addition, as you saw in the maps, property has minimal frontage on Cultural Park Boulevard, which makes it a weak candidate for commercial development. So the loss of professional and replacement of RML, we see, despite our desire to keep professional and commercial uses, we find that the loss of this property does not hurt As part, excuse me, as, why we do PowerPoints? As part of the, of the, of our analysis, included Section 3.4.6 of our Land Development Code, which involves six criteria that we review. Among these criteria are, I'll just list them one through six. Whether the proposed zoning district is consistent with the city comprehensive plan, which the RML zoning district is consistent with the mixed-use future land use classification. Whether the full range of uses allowed in the proposed zoning district would be compatible with existing uses in the area under consideration, and we find that most of the properties are already developed with uses compatible to, to this proposed zoning district, and that the surrounding area, as you saw in the aerial, has residential uses to the south and additionally to the west. A full range of uses in the RML district, which consists of residential uses and those ancillary uses, are compatible with those existing uses present today. The third item we, the third item we review is whether the range of uses allowed in the proposed zoning district will be compatible with existing and potential uses in the area under consideration. And as I mentioned earlier, surrounding area consists of residential uses, so the proposed, so the uses allowed in this proposed RML district would be compatible with that which is already there. Whether the proposed zoning district will serve a community need or broader public serve, broader public purpose, well, we have a well-documented need for additional multifamily residential uses, as identified in the Wolf multifamily residential studies performed in 2015 and 2019, which indicated a shortfall that would need to be resolved by 1,500 additional multifamily units per year for five years. So while this is a small piece of property to lotsite, this, every little bit helps as far as to address that shortfall. Five and six, the characteristics of the proposed rezone area, whether it's suitable to the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district. This is located on Academy Boulevard, which is a collector roadway. Residential uses are present along this roadway already, mostly single-family, but multifamily proximate to this piece of property, all the way south to Veterans Parkway. So we find that this rezone area is suitable for, for the uses permitted. And then finally, whether a zoning district other than the RML district will create fewer potential adverse impacts to existing uses of the residential area. There are two zoning districts that permit multifamily uses, the RML and the RMM. In all cases, the RML is viewed as the less intensive zoning district as it pertains to multifamily development in terms of density, whereas the RML has a maximum of 16 units per acre, whereas RMM has 25, and in terms of maximum height, where RML has a maximum height of 38 feet versus RMM's 50. So we feel that this proposed zoning designation would create fewer adverse impacts than, than an alternative. To conclude, this rezone provides additional opportunities for residential diversity in Cape Coral. The proposed amendment is consistent with the Comp Plan and Land Development Code. This was presented before the Hearing Examiner back on May 10th, and the Hearing Examiner recommended approval of this rezone. Staff recommends approval, and I'll stand by for any questions.
And now open up public hearing. There's anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 59-22, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 59-22?
So moved.
Second. I just had one quick question. You know, when you look at the, the map as far as the current future land use, it appears that it has a current future land use of mixed use, and if you look at the zoning for not only that property, but the surrounding properties, it has a zoning classification for residential multifamily low. Are we gonna be moving forward to change the future land use of those properties?
Not as, not at this moment. This was a privately initiated request, and for properties that have less than acre in size with full access to utilities, we permit development to use one use. So as it stands today, this use, rezone to RML, a property owner would be able to develop a multifamily use without any additional uses, like a commercial or a professional, to add on that. So as we see it, it's a developable site. We're not putting any, any restrictions on, on development, so we're willing to let that lie.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. That's only a question. I have any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion in a second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. We'll move on to Ordinance 60-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 60-22, An Ordinance Amending the City of Cape Coral Official Zoning District Map of All Property Within the Limits of the City of Cape Coral. By rezoning property described as Lots 15 through 17, Block 5336, Cape Coral, Unit 58. From residential single-family to commercial corridor zone. Property is located at 707 Southwest 32nd Court, providing severability and an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing also, so anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I do. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, for the record, Mike Struvie, Planning Team Coordinator with the City Planning Division. My credentials are in file with the City Clerk's office. This is a privately initiated rezoning request. The site that is proposed to be rezoned is a single site consisting of three lots, and the proposal before you is to rezone the site from the single-family residential to the commercial corridor zoning district. The site is located in western Cape Coral at 707 Southwest 32nd Court. This is an aerial map, a little difficult to tell here, but the site does have a single-family home. Surrounding uses consist primarily of single-family homes to the north and to the west, to the east and to the south. There are vacant sites, as well as several non-residential uses on developed parcels. Now, this particular block, Block 5336, may look familiar to you. It was just about two years ago or so that Mr. Diaz, who was the managing member of several LLCs at the time, came in and requested a rezoning of 14 sites in this subject block. And those 14 sites were concentrated on the upper two-thirds portion of this block. That rezoning was approved from single-family residential to commercial quarter. The only site that was not included... The only site that was not included in, in that block, that cohesive group of lots, if you will, was this site that you see here tonight. And that was by design. That applicant was the owner of that single-family home. They were not interested in being part of that rezoning request, and so they requested that they not be considered as part of that application. Subsequent to that rezoning, two years ago, being approved by the City Council, Mr. Diaz negotiated a sale. He now owns that property, and he's bringing in this last remaining property in this entire block that still retains its single-family residential zoning. This shows the future land use classification of the site in the subject block as Pine Island Road District. The current zoning of this site, as I've mentioned earlier, is R1. The proposal before you this evening is to rezone the site to the commercial quarter district. Just very briefly, this rezone will bring this one single remaining site in this block into consistency with its future land use classification. It will add to an assembly that has been already initiated by Mr. Diaz. Staff is recommending approval of this rezoning request. This case was considered by the Hearing Examiner back in May, and the Hearing Examiner recommended approval. There were no speakers at that public hearing, and we have received no correspondence on this case. And I'll stand by in case you have any questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 60-22, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor. Council Joe Mazurk was President of BGM Consulting here on behalf of the applicant. Mike did, Mike did an excellent job in making this presentation. I can't believe it was two years ago that we did the rest of this block. It's amazing how long it takes to assemble property. But, good news, we were able to assemble the last lot, and this is just making this last single-family lot consistent with the rest of the block, and will enable the Island Pearl development to break ground. This will be Phase Two of Island Pearl, but this will facilitate a very nice development up in northwest Cape Coral. We respectfully request you approve the rezoning application.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on Ordinance 60-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 60-22?
No move.
Any further discussion by council? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay. We'll move on to Ordinance 54-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 54-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map, from commercial slash professional to multifamily land use, for property described as lots 1 through 6, Block 1842, Cape Coral subdivision, Unit 45, Part 1. Property located at 3103 through 3111 Southwest Santa Barbara Place, providing severability and an effective date.
Mr. Struvey?
Good evening again, Mayor. Council members, for the record, Mike Struvey, Planning Team Coordinator with the City Planning Division. This case before you this evening is a city-initiated future land use map amendment, consists of three sites, total of six lots, .8 acres. The site is located northwest of Gleason Parkway and Santa Barbara Boulevard. And the request is to change the future land use classification from the commercial-professional to the multifamily residential, future land use classification. Aerial map shows the three subject sites outlined in red. The two southernmost sites are developed with duplexes. The third site to the north is vacant at this time. Surrounding uses are largely residential, in particular, to the north and to the south and west. To the east, or to the immediate east, there is a commercial shopping center. The existing future land use classification is commercial-professional indicated by the red color. The proposal before you this evening is to amend the future land use classification from the commercial-professional to the multifamily, future land use classification. Again, the area consists of two sites, total of six lots. The sites have had a commercial-professional future land use classification since 2003, so there's really been no change in these three lots for nearly 20 years. Staff is bringing this amendment forward for your consideration to bring the land use in better alignment with the uses existing on these three properties, and also to bring the future land use into better alignment with the uses on most of the surrounding properties as well. If this land use amendment is approved by the City Council, there would be a follow-up rezoning that would, we would be bringing before the City Council at our future date, and we would be rezoning these three sites to the RML district. In terms of our analysis of this case, we looked at several policies in the future land use element in the comprehensive plan, in particular, Policy 1.7, that provides guidelines for multifamily housing. This area, this collective area meets three of the four locational guidelines and partially meets a fourth, so that suggests that this is a good candidate for a change to a multifamily future land use. Policy 1.13 provides guidance concerning the location of commercial nodes in the city. The site could be considered a commercial node, but it is, would also be considered a weak or, or a poor commercial node if we were to analyze this case now, and it, and it did not have a future land use classification associated with it. Furthermore, this is emphasized when you look at Policy 1.14, which contains our commercial siting guidelines. When we applied those commercial siting guidelines to this particular site, the area met only two of the eight guidelines, which suggests that these three properties are a poor candidate for retaining their commercial-professional future land use classification. As a result of this analysis, staff is recommending approval of this particular ordinance, and that is, again, to change the future land use from commercial-professional to the multifamily future land use classification. The Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed this case back in June, and they voted six to zero to recommend approval. There were no speakers at hearing. We have received a couple of phone calls concerning this case, both individuals wanting more details about this case. We also received a letter of support from one of the property owners directly involved in this application, and I'll stand by in case you have questions.
Thank you. I now open up a public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 54-22, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 54-22?
No move.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
We'll move to Ordinance 70-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 70-22, an ordinance amending the vacant land contract for sale of municipal surplus real property, described as lots 38 and 39, Block 2986, Cape Coral, Unit 42, Part 1. Authorizing the city manager to execute Amendment Number Two to vacant land contract conveying the aforementioned surplus real property to Danny Garcia. Property located at 1231 Northwest 20th Terrace, providing severability and an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council members, Dawn Andrews with the Real Estate Division. Ordinance 70-22 is for the approval of Amendment Number Two to the surplus contract approved by City Council at the June 1st Council Meeting under Ordinance 50-22. The amendment is to extend the closing date to no more than 30 days following the completion of a suit-for-quiet title. I had spoken with the buyer's attorney today to get an update on to where they are in the process, and he, because of the docket being so full, he anticipates that they should be through the entire process sometime in October or November. The amendment does state that the contract will terminate on March 1st, 2023, if the lawsuit is not completed and the property closed at that time. I'll stand by for questions.
I now open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 70-22, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 70-22?
No move.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Resolution 140-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 140-22, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida relating to the city's provision of lot mowing services within lot mowing assessment areas, Districts 1, 2, 3, and 4, for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, determining that certain real property will be specially benefited by the lot mowing services, establishing the terms and conditions of proposed special assessments to fund the lot mowing services, establishing a public hearing to consider imposition of the proposed special assessments and the method of their collection, directing the provision of notice and connection therewith, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mason?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Council members, as you'll recall, we do these every year, these assessments. This is the first hearing, and then we'll get back together again in September after we've noticed everybody that these assessments are out there, and then, and then approve the final assessments. And so, for the lot mowing program, again, we, the City Council approved 13 mows a year, or to be mowed at least 13 times a year last year, and this has moved forward into this year, continuing that program. The, consists of vacant parcels in four different districts, so we have four districts that we assess these, the lot mowing program for. The program will begin in January, goes through to November. We also have included in this a pepper tree removal program. We also have owl nest trimming. We also have owl nest trimming that begins in, well, it begins in May and continues through January, and then we, the rates are equivalent, or calculated on equivalent 5,000 square-foot units. So, and we generally, we have a lot of 5,000 square-foot units out there, so that's how we, it's one of the reasons why we calculate it that way. So, this is a reminder, these are the four districts. The largest district is south of Pine Island Road. It's also the most built-out district, so it has the least amount of vacant lots associated with it. The other three districts on the north side of Pine Island, Pine Island Road. Annual assessments at a, on, for a single 5,000 square-foot lot, slight increase year-over-year, about 79 cents for Districts 1 and 2, 78 cents each for Districts 3 and 4. And double that, and you come up with $1.58 versus $1.56 for Districts 1 and 2, and 3 and 4, respectively. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. I now open up public input. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 140-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 140-22?
No move.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Costin?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution 141-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 141-22, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida relating to the city's provision of solid waste collection and disposal services, facilities, and programs, establishing the estimated solid waste cost and assessment rates for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, directing the preparation of an assessment role, authorizing a public hearing to consider the adoption of the annual rate resolution, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mason?
Sir, Mayor. Council members, residential solid waste assessment, Waste Pro is guaranteed a 1% increase for the residential collection through Ordinance 4, that was approved by the City Council on June 1, 2020. Waste Pro is also requesting an 8.32% CPI increase, which we've validated that the CPI adjustment, based upon the information included in that agreement. Lee County Solid Waste Division is also proposing some increases to their disposal fees for both MSW gate fee, horticultural, CND, and Class 3. The pilot program for the bulk drop-off, we're looking, because it's been so successful, the original $100,000 has, has increased in cost, so we're recommending increasing that to $266,711. And the residential-commercial rates will then be set by the City Council at the August 31st Council Meeting. So, to give you an idea of what we're looking at, the fiscal year 2022 adopted rate was $222, $220.72. That also included a reduction from collection surplus that we have garnered over the many, over many years prior to last year. The proposed increase at 1% would be $248.50, and at the proposed rate, including the 8.32% increase, would be $260.87. I have Bill here from Waste Pro, who has a, wants, you know, have a brief conversation about what his cost increases have been, and the impact of the, the inflationary pressures that we're all, we're all feeling. Bill? You still here? Yeah, good, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you all for having us here again tonight. I just wanted to stop by and talk a little bit about the adjustment that we've requested this year. As Mark mentioned, it's a CPI adjustment. It's a formula that's in the agreement, the 8.32%, and that is intended to cover fuel expenses, increases in labor costs, parts, trucks, you know, those types of things. This year, as we've all seen, just really across the board, costs have skyrocketed. Just as an example, I was talking to some folks the other day, our fuel costs, we're diesel, 100% diesel in our fleet, our fuel costs in the past year have gone from roughly 2 1/4 a gallon to north of $5 a gallon, which is where it sits today. Hopefully, it comes down, like we're seeing other fuels come down, but right now, it's still kind of hovering up there. So, I just wanted to talk a little bit about that. And then, some of the other things to just kind of update on, Mr. Mason talked about the Cape Coral Drop-Off Center in North Cape. It has been a rousing success. You know, we're real excited to be part of that, and we are working now to extend that pilot program out for possibly as long as two years. So, we've got some things we're looking at right now, so I'm fairly confident we're going to get that done. The bulk collection program we put together with the Code Compliance Department about a year ago, I think we started last October, November, has been another great success. And the way that works, if you remember, is that if there is a problem in a neighborhood and someone puts something out illegally, Code goes out, checks it out, they give them 48 hours to fix it. If it's not fixed, they call us, we take it away. So, it's really shrunk that timeframe that material, illegally dumped material in some cases is out in front of people's homes. So, we're real proud of that program, think that's done real well. And we are working on adding two new routes. They are scheduled to go into effect probably here in August, early September, part of our, just our normal growth that we look at and how we handle those types of things. So, I just wanted to share that information, and if you all have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just a, just a couple of more things. I'm sorry, wanted him to get out, get his information in. Lee County published their agenda for next week for them to approve solid waste rates as well, and they're looking at a 10.96% increase that the staff is recommending pursuant to their contractual relationships and based, and generally, we come back, when we come back in August, early September to finalize these things out, we normally give you a schedule, show you what, how we compare to everybody else. We'll continue to be the lowest ones in town, or in the county, if, if their rates go through, based upon these numbers that we have available today.
Thank you. Just one quick question before I open up public input. Madam City Attorney, I believe I had reached out to you regarding the contract with Waste Pro. I know that we, in our contract, have a mandate of a 1% increase, and the C- Pro, I know that we, in our contract, have a mandate of a 1% increase, and the CPI increase is the 8.32%, and I believe that's the maximum that is allowed. Do we have to go from the 1% to the 8.3, or is there latitude in between the, that, to me, that's the maximum, is the 8.32%?
Yes, there is latitude, you could go in between the 1 and up to the 8.32.
Okay. That was the only question I had. I will now open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 141-22, please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion for Resolution 141-22? Or is there any other discussion?
I'll make the motion so we can get it discussed.
I'll do the second so we can have discussion.
All right, so we have a motion for approval from Councilmember Tate, and a second from Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Tate.
Can someone explain to me the large increase in the pilot program for the bulk, and what that's going to include? I'm sorry, I didn't ask the city manager when we met, I just didn't think about it.
No, it's okay. As I understand it, it's actually the number of, we have a couple, a number of roll-offs that are dropped there, and the, 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 well, the folks that are bringing whatever they're bringing there, causing more of the turnover of the roll-on, on the row rows. And so with that increase, there's an increased cost associated with that.
Okay, and Waste Pro is assisting with that?
They actually, they have the roll-on roll-offs.
Yeah, the roll-offs.
They drop them off, they get filled up, they come in, they pick them up, and they take them.
And then pick them up.
And so that's the, that's the, yes, that's the cost. That's the increased cost, plus the personnel, the personnel side of it as well.
Well, that's what I was asking, so it is personnel too?
Yes.
And we, how many people do we have there now, and how many are we getting?
How many people?
We have...
One person there, one staff, and I think we're, we also have somebody out there as well.
They have one, and we have one?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill, would you mind answering just a couple of quick questions? So I wanted to, you had talked about the success of the bulk program, which I think is great, and you had also said that it's the, it's allowing for items to be, spend less time on the curb, and I was just wondering if you had any metrics? So for example, prior to doing the pilot program, do we know the average time that the bulk pickups would stay on the curb? I mean, I know I've reached out to you and Mike with residents who've reached out to me, couple of one-offs, most of the time, they're move-outs and they're not in compliance. But could you clarify, like, maybe a little bit of the metrics, like where we were before, and where we were now, and how that program is making a difference?
Sure, so, and I apologize, I may have mixed my programs together when I spoke.
Okay.
So I was referring to the code compliance program that we work on to get rid of those larger non-compliant piles. That has gone from a, I believe, when we first started this, it was a 60 to 90-day process, it's down to a 48 to 72-hour process now.
That's awesome.
To get stuff off the streets. The background process still takes that 60 to 90 days to go through the magistrate process, but the neighbors aren't exposed to the eyesore and the material for that period of time now, so, so that's what I was referring to there. On the, the bulk drop-off, I don't have any of the metrics with me, we do track tonnage, we track, you know, number of vehicles that go through, I know Terry has a lot of that information, he might be able to share that at a later time, I don't have it with me, unfortunately.
Okay, I would love to see that, just so that we're able to communicate the success of that pilot program, and then especially if we're looking to potentially grow it in other parts of the city, I think it's important to communicate out those metrics to our residents.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussions? And it appears the, the motion on the floor is, if you read the resolution, is to approve the 1% plus the 8.3% for a total of 9.32% increase, is that correct?
Yeah, I want to hear from everybody, I was hoping people would discuss that before we vote.
Okay.
Okay, so I want to change that.
Yeah, for me, I could support the 1% and maybe half of the 8.32%, so that would be 4.16, that's kind of where I was leaning towards. Plus the 1%.
Plus the 1%.
Yes, so half of the 8.32% increase. 5 point...
5 point?
5.16%. So that, that was kind of what, the direction I was leaning in.
Oops.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was there yesterday as well, I've been going back and forth on this, you know, I understand the, what Waste Pro faces with the increase in costs and all that, but yesterday I really thought the 1 plus 4, when you said 4.1, was, was, at this particular point, to me, was fair, so it'd be the 5. It'd be the 5 number, and I just don't think I've, I've changed from there, I think I'm still, I'm still there.
Councilmember Nelson.
I, I agree with the 5%. You know, I know everything's gone up, and I know that our residents are, you know, having to face, like everyone else in the country, are increased prices and everything, and I could support the 5, I think that that is fair at this time, so I would do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? So I guess it's up to our motion maker.
Okay, so I was going to tell you, so the motion maker would make it the 1% plus splitting the other parts, so it'd be 4.16, so it's 5.16% increase. And that's what my motion would be.
I would agree, second, second to amend my second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long? Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Hey, thank you, move on to Resolution 142-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 142-22, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida relating to the city's provision of fire protection services, facilities, and programs, establishing the estimated fire protection assessed cost and assessment rates for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, directing the preparation of an assessment roll, authorizing a public hearing to consider the adoption of the annual rate resolution, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mason.
Yes, sir, fire protection assessment, the assessment is calculated at 62% recovery, as we've discussed on several occasions. Overall, the adjustments for the Tier 1 allocation is a 9.77% increase, and for the Tier 2 allocation, it's the same 9.77% increase. The, we see a decrease, a slight decrease of 22 cents on the tier rate, tier 2 rate per EBU, and a, an increase of $14.97 on the Tier 1 rate per parcel increase. And that's it. You have any questions? It's, now, this is based upon the proposed budget for fire, so that's, that's how we calculate this.
Okay, I'll now open public input, is there anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 142-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 142-22, or any future or further conversations? Any other discussion? You have a motion and a second on the floor, Madam City Clerk, please read the title. I'm sorry, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Move on to Resolution 143-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 143-22, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida approving a stormwater fee for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 that exceeds the maximum amount established for fiscal year 2021 to 2022, and authorizing a public hearing and directing the provision of notice thereof, providing an effective date.
Mr. Mason.
Missed over on the solid waste. So as the council recall, back in, I think in 2019, 2020, you had agreed to a 5% increase per year, beginning in 2021, and we've increased it over that period of time with fiscal year 2023 proposed for an increase of $5. This, so, our ordinance require us to do this, this stormwater user fee rate resolution annually, the not-to-exceed rate is $135. We'll have a public hearing on the final rate resolution on August 31st, and yes, we have to do this every year. So, just a little background on the stormwater system, you know, it's probably one of the largest stormwater systems in the country, 409 miles of waterways, you know, we have 3,000 miles of swales, 521 miles of pipes, so there's a lot that we have to maintain with regard to stormwater. Some of the operations that we do, you know, from catch basin replacement down to residential driveway inspections to street sweeping, and of course, our vacuum trucks are out there cleaning out the various catch basins at the same time. One of the, our level of service for maintenance of existing infrastructure is impacted by the increase in construction of the cost of the, of the single-family homes generating more pipe requirements, et cetera. Additional FTEs have been approved by the city council to adjust our increased permitting workload. We have, we're doing, they've completed all the wear inspections as part of the wear's master plan, and I believe we're going to be coming forward with a plan to replace or upgrade some of the wears that we have out there. Constructing, of course, you know, we have, you know, the, our boat ramps, our governmental use-only boat ramps, which we've had a lot of conversation about over the last month or month and a half or so. And of course, they've secured the permit for the 10 bubble curtains, so, which is funded by and has been paid for through the stormwater system. So the plan for the fiscal year '23, the $135 will keep the same level of service for operations and maintenance, it'll continue, at least a million dollars a year for the water quality projects, funding towards wear improvements for $500,000 annually, flooding prevention, we've put forth about $850,000, and of course, we have a lot of drain pipe improvements that we do, $1.5 million, we have the UEP debt repayments. Now, when we talk about, you know, North One, when we come back, that will also have an impact on the stormwater system in the future. So again, we're recommending adopting a rate of $135 per ERU, which represents a $5 increase over the prior year. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Now open up public input, is there anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 143-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 143-22?
Second.
Any counsel discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Move on to Resolution 144-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 144-22, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida relating to the funding of certain water, wastewater, and irrigation utility system distribution facilities throughout, through the imposition of non-ad valorem special assessments, providing for the imposition of non-ad valorem special assessments against real property benefited by such facilities, describing the real property subject to assessment, directing the assessment coordinator to prepare a preliminary assessment role, establishing a public hearing to consider imposition of the proposed assessments, directing the provision of notice and connection therewith, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mason, you're up again.
I'm going to be up here for a couple more. Thank you, Mayor, council members, contribution to aid of construction fees, we charge these when there are extension of lines that we don't do assessments for, and in this particular circumstance, fiscal, ordinance 5618 allows us to collect delinquent contribution or aid of construction fee loans, because we actually enter in loans when we do these, via installments on the tax bill. So we have, I believe we have one property that is delinquent in the tune of $27,000. Normally, we would have put this on for the tax bill for about three years, however, this is a very large number, so we're recommending that we go to 10 years on this particular one. And so that will be the, the recommendation to put this on the November tax bill, if it's not paid off by September 10th, 2022. We do notify the property owner that, that, you know, that this assessment is out there, and if it's not paid off at this particular time, it will go on the tax bill. And so we show one, one account that we're going to be putting out there, actually, I think it's two, so one for five years, one for 10 years. Been here for any questions?
I'll now open up public input. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 144-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 144-22?
So moved.
Any counsel discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate? Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Resolution 145-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 145-22, a resolution of the City of Cape Coral, Florida relating to the funding of certain water, wastewater, and irrigation utility system capital facility improvements through the imposition of non-ad valorem special assessments, providing for the imposition of non-ad valorem special assessments against real property benefited by such improvements, describing the real property subject to assessment, directing the assessment coordinator to prepare a preliminary assessment role, establishing a public hearing to consider imposition of the proposed assessments, directing the provision of notice and connection therewith, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mason.
Yes, sir, capital facility expansion fees, it's very similar to the SEAC fees. Prior to Southwest 67, the majority of, we used to do loans for the capital expansion facility, capital expansion fees. And so we have some of these loans that are still outstanding, and in this particular case, we have two, two properties that are delinquent, and with the delinquency and the ordinance 5418 allowing us to put these delinquent capital facility expansion fees on the tax bill, we're recommending that, in this particular case, that if they're not paid off by September 10th, that they go on the November 22 tax bill.
I would now open up public hearing, I'm sorry, public input, is there anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 145-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed.
Motion to approve 145-22. Second.
Any counsel discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Move on to Resolution 146-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Resolution 146-22, a resolution of the city council of the City of Cape Coral, Florida relating to the levy of city ad valorem taxes for the 2022 tax year, establishing proposed millage rates, establishing public hearing dates, providing for notice to the Lee County Property Appraiser and Department of Revenue, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mason.
Okay, so, we, again, we, we're required to do this, we're required to provide notice to the property appraiser no later than August 4th, to notify them what needs to go on to the trim notice. So, we generally set the millage rate and the public hearing dates at this particular meeting, this is required pursuant to Florida statute, again, the due date is August 4th, and so we would be setting the not-to-exceed rate, in other words, in this particular circumstance, when you set this rate tonight, you can't go above it, and so, you know, but you can certainly go below it, that's the whole point behind it. So, and ad valorem taxes, as you're aware, provides for the general operations of the city, millage rate, again, it's millage rate taxable value times the, equals the millage rate times the taxable value, because they add more taxes, we express this in $1,000 increments, or the rate of, per $1,000 of value. We express this in $1,000 increments, or the rate of, per $1,000 of value. City manager proposed budget developed utilizing a millage rate of 5.5568 mils for the general fund, and we're also proposing a general obligation debt service millage rate of .0471 Recommend, we do recommend for the trim notice purposes, however, that we approve a rate of 6.25 mils. This gives maximum flexibility for the city council between now and the final adoption in case anything might occur between now and then. So it, that's one of the reasons why we recommend that you go to the, the highest rate, because it can always come down. The fiscal year 22, fiscal year 22 adopted was 6.25, the ad valorem levy at 96% was 110.3 million. Rollback rate is at 5.3694, that would generate 117 at 96% of levy, approximately $6.8 million increase. Fiscal year 23, city manager proposed 5.5568 mils, it's about 121.2 million, 10.8 million, 10.9 million dollar increase. Or the not to exceed recommendation of 6.25 mils at 136.2 million, 136.3 million dollars, or $26 million increase. Millage rate can be lowered at the public hearings on September 9th or, or September 23rd. This will be, this will provide the city council with most flexibility between now and then. As discussed, the voter debt general obligation bond for parks, we're recommending no change in the, in the, in the, in the rate at .0471, although the debt service is higher than the, than the million dollars that you see here for the revenue that we would receive. We do have excess revenues that were collected in 2021 that we would apply. This is likely to be the last year that we'll see this type of rate, but we do need to burn off those, the additional funds that we had collected previously. This is a, you know, the proposed, the proposed budgets were an estimate and subject to change, but at the fiscal year 2023, proposed budget, you can say it was about $250 million, 250.5 million. And Thursday, September 8th, where is the recommended meeting rate, meet first public hearing date at 5:05 PM, and September 22nd, the same, at 5:05 PM. I noticed on the previous page, it said September 9th and September 23rd, but it should be the 8th and the 22nd. One of the reasons why we set these particular dates is because we can't meet on the same dates as either Broward, the, the Lee County Board of County Commissioners or the school board. So we have to at least meet after they do. Okay? So the final public hearings will be held on Thursday, September 22nd, 2022 at 5:05 PM. And I'm here for any questions you have.
Thank you. I now open up public input. If there's anyone wishing to speak on Resolution 146-22, please come forward.
Hello, Ms. Mayor, City Council, City staff. My name's Tom Shadrack. I'm a permanent resident. I'm also on the Budget Review Committee, and I just want to make it clear that I'm speaking as a private citizen, not as the Budget Review Group. I kind of, and I'm only talking about the millage rate that you're proposing, not the other things that Mr. Mason mentioned. If you could page up just a little bit for me, just to move that up to that bottom part. That's actually, that last section on the bottom left is what the ordinance says. It's what you're proposing. It has nothing to do with not to exceed. You're not saying that. It is what you're proposing. So the only thing you're proposing, and I've directed the city manager to do, is the 5.5568. And that was clear in Mr. Mason's report there. That's what he's proposing, and that's what you need to say. I'm not sure it's a moot point to me that we are proposing. We've gone through three workshops together. We've never done that before. So that's great information upfront. You've got better data. You can now say and give the residents, when they get their trim notice, good information that shows their last year's taxes, what the rollback rate is, and now what you're proposing, not some maximum price or not to exceed price. And if you look at that top right column, it doesn't say not to exceed, it says proposed. So be careful what you're signing. The city manager and Mr. Mason are not signing the ordinance, you guys are. And it says proposed, and you're not doing that. You're not proposing 6.25. In fact, that value is ridiculous. No one's even saying 6.25 as a budget, and we haven't said that since January. Another thing I want to draw you to, it's not that we always do that. As I said, you've had three workshops that have made that more clear to you now, we've never done that before. And as an example, Lee County, last year, they had a higher rate than the year before, they had a rollback rate, and they use the rollback rate in their proposed. So it's not like precedent setting that you don't, you go back and use the old rate all the time. So, so, and I know last week, the council, you noted your displeasure that the city manager presented you four other options or something higher than what you directed them to do in the budget. And now here again, 6.25 is not what you asked to do. So I'm suggesting you put in what you proposed, so the residents on their trim notices have real data on their personal property that they have that shows the math and not just some average. And I know you guys got tough decisions, and it's been long already, and the, and the Budget Committee is meeting daily to try to work on it, but I think we need to tell the residents the truth, and that's what trim means, the truth. So I know you got a tough job, and I just want to say, you know, we all have tough things to do, but God is watching what we're doing, and God bless all of you guys for what you do. God bless Cape Coral, and God bless the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public input, please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Councilmember Cosden.
Well, I guess first I'll make a motion to approve at the 5.5568 rate.
Second.
I actually agree with the speaker. I was going to bring this up. I think none of us supported the 6.25, so it doesn't make sense to me to make that the proposed or the not to exceed. I think it should be what, the highest that any of us wanted was the 5.5568. I think I'm gonna have some disagreement, though. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you, Councilmember Cosden. As the speaker said, the, the trim notice says proposed, the city manager brought his proposed budget forward. I know some of us decided that, or weighed in that we wanted to go to the rollback rate, but the city manager did bring a proposed budget to council at the 5.5568 rate, and I was also going to bring that up tonight, so I am in agreement with you that that should be the trim notice that we send out to the community.
Can I just add one more thing?
Yes.
I think that by doing this, it's true, it's all about truth, but I don't want to give residents more of a heart attack than they're already having about expenses.
With everything else.
It's gonna be a big, be it go to 6.25, and I just don't want people, it's not gonna happen, so I don't want people to think that it is.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I mean, history has dictated in the past, we've always went to the not to exceed rate. I wish the ordinance would have been a little bit more clear rather than using the word proposed, but it doesn't. I said to Budget Review last week that I thought setting the not to exceed rate at, at the 5.568 number was, was fine. You can make a case, you can make an argument for the not to exceed rate, just to offer us that flexibility should something happen in the meantime where that rate might be needed. I just want to, the council to know, we did have one council member who's not here tonight who had proposed a, the halfback rate. So, you know, not all of council was in agreement from five, from the preliminary rate down to the rollback. There was one council member who mentioned his thoughts about going to the, to the higher rate. I am good, however, with the...
Councilmember Nelson?
I'll just weigh in. Yes, I think the five, the 5.5 rate was, was painfully obvious to all of us to not to exceed that. There was no need to do the .625. So I will concur so far with the rest of my team and agree. Thank you.
Councilmember Tate?
Yeah, I think it's the prudent thing to do. I appreciate the speaker, but I think all of us kind of had figured that out long before with the increase in the stormwater fee, the garbage, the electric, everything else. I think the residents will see the proposed rate as something that we're working towards if we decide to go back to the rollback rate or wherever we go, but at least here, they'll see that we have reduced it from last year on their trim notice, and I think that's important. Thank you.
We had a motion by Councilmember Cosden. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Can I just verify that the motion is to amend Resolution 146-22, Section 1, proposed millage rate 5.5568?
Yes.
That's correct. Okay. Thank you. Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Yep. Okay, thank you very much. I think before we get to introductions, we are going to circle back to the item on the agenda that we skipped, which was 9D, new business, the addendum for academic village development discussion. I think we wouldn't, Mr. City Manager, to be present during that discussion, and I see he is back with us, so I feel that we'll go back to that, and I'll turn it over to Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I apologize for not being here this evening, but I know you've been briefed on what I've been doing for the last few hours. Hopefully, we'll conclude our work sometime this evening and brief you on that at a later date. So the issue before us is a conversation about where we are with the solicitation for the disposition of the academic village property. Where we are, we currently have an active solicitation. My understanding in being briefed by Ms. Barron, the evaluation committee concluded its work before I disbanded it, so I am awaiting their formal recommendation to me in order to decide whether to accept their recommendation and then direct them to negotiate with the top-ranked proposer. In the alternative, I can reject their recommendation and provide them additional instructions on how to move forward. Or I could report back to city council that for whatever reason, I've decided to cancel that particular solicitation and go back out on the street, re-advertise. Or I can come back to city council and say that we've decided to cancel the solicitation and await further direction from council before moving forward. So that's where we are with the solicitation. Again, I consider it to be active until I report back to you on what action we, we plan to take. Now, I think, all right, I'm gonna leave it at that.
Okay. The reason I added this to the agenda originally is because of the, the email that we all received in the middle of the process. The city manager had disbanned the committee, so my first question was, what's the next step? I think he's identified what, what those steps are. Doesn't sound like the board in the middle of their discussions received the email from the city manager. Of course, unbeknownst to us, that was the case, so that's why I added it. So I think the question is here today is, do we just continue the process? Or do we go a different direction? I think we're to this point. I think we just, since the city manager is waiting the recommendation from the committee, I think we just let that play out, would be my recommendation, and let the city manager come back with his recommendation, and then, as we all know, we have the ultimate decision from there. So is everybody in pretty much agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I wanted to say. You can take your time.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, just...
No, the only thing I wanted to point out is Ms. Barron mentioned to me that she believes that they'll have the formal recommendation to me by the end of this week. So hopefully, by close of business Friday, I will have that information and certainly alert you to what direction we're headed in.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, we will move back into the introductions. Item 10B is introductions, Ordinance 65-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title and set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 65-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from rural, a Lee County designation to Pine Island Road District. Land use for property lying in Section 16, Township 44 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida. Property located at 2301 Southwest Pine Island Road, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be August 17th, 2022.
Any discussion from staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance 64-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title and set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 64-22, an ordinance establishing the City of Cape Coral Utility Codes, amending the City of Cape Coral Land Development Code, Article 12, Building Code and Engineering Design Standards. Chapter 1, Adoption of Codes, Florida Building Code, the National Electrical Code, International Property Maintenance Code, and Engineering Design Standards. Section 12.1, Purpose, Applicability, and Definitions, by providing for the adoption of the City of Cape Coral Utility Standards, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be August 17th, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Item 11, reports. Councilmember Hayden, report?
No report.
Councilmember Long?
No report.
Councilmember Nelson?
No, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I would just like to thank all the employees that work in permitting for, for doing the best they can with the tools they have, and that we stand behind you, and we're trying to get you the help and the tools you need, but just hang on, and that we appreciate you. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Tate?
No report.
Councilmember Cosden?
No report.
Real quickly, I also echo what Councilmember Shepherd said. You know, I know the, you know, our permitting department is struggling, and we just want you to know that we understand and support you moving forward, realize that you're short on staff, you may not have all the tools to do your job to be successful, but we're working hard to make sure that we identify those shortcomings and get you the help that you need, and we ask that you just hang in there and, and, you know, help's on the way. As far as events I've attended recently, it's a pretty short list for this week. Attended the budget review meeting on 7/21. Also on 7/21, I attended the Southwest Florida League of Cities meeting. During that meeting, which represents, I believe, 12 cities, there was an election, I had put my name in to be a secretary, and so in, in a future year, that, that would mean that I'd be the president of the Southwest Florida League of Cities, and honored to announce that I was elected to the secretary's position. So I will be on the executive board with that particular committee. Also, attended the budget review meeting on 7/25, and the C-TAC meeting this morning as well. One quick item I wanted to bring up, just to let you know of, of my recommendation and my discussion with the city manager. You know, we've had some discussions here recently with our selection advisory committee. We are all aware that we changed the ordinance here recently, and, you know, council has the opportunity to be the selection advisory committee on certain topics... has the opportunity to be the selection advisory committee on certain topics if we so choose. In reviewing that ordinance, again, I think where we may have fell short is we did not put a mechanism in place how to decide if we want staff to be the selection advisory committee, or if we want council to be that selection advisory committee. And I think we fell short in that, in that ordinance where that's not specified. And I do believe there needs to be a mechanism in place. So what I am asking our city manager is, and I want to add it to a future committee of the whole agenda, so we can have that discussion collectively as a council, to see what type of a mechanism that we may be able to put in place, get the recommendations from staff, and go back and revisit that ordinance and tweak it a little bit for, it's not only better for this council but future councils to have that mechanism in place. So I just wanted to bring that, that up. Madam City Attorney, report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the council is aware, the city is a party to eminent domain litigation involving Festival Park. More specifically, the litigation entitled City of Cape Coral v. Bunch, case number 20CA2581; City of Cape Coral v. Roy, case number 20CA6682; City of Cape Coral v. Guerrero, case number 20CA6824; City of Cape Coral v. Sibolik, case number 20CA29652; City of Cape Coral v. Blanco, case number 20CA2780; City of Cape Coral v. Guzman, case number 20CA4962; City of Cape Coral v. Dell, case number 20CA2375; and City of Cape Coral v. Linda T. Speak, now known as Linda T. Hulani, case number 20CA4966. Accordingly, pursuant to Section 286.011, Subsection 8, Florida statutes, I am requesting that the city council convene in a closed attorney-client session to discuss settlement strategies. If the council agrees, that session may be scheduled for Wednesday, August 3, 2022, at 3:00 PM.
Need a motion for that?
You need a motion for that, Madam City Attorney?
Yes.
I make a motion that we have a shade meeting on August 3 at 3:00 PM.
Second.
For the discussion that City Attorney just brought together.
Bill, a second.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Please call the roll.
Your Honor, can I have just one moment? I have a question, a private question for the City Attorney.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'm ready to take the roll. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Madam Assistant City Manager, report? No report. Okay, thank you. Time and place of future meeting. We have a shade meeting scheduled for August 3 at 3:00 PM. Also, we have a regular council meeting scheduled for Wednesday, August 3, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.